Excellent. Hello, everyone. I would like to call to order the Finance Committee meeting of Tuesday, August 25th, 2020. It is 1:06 PM and we are meeting on the Zoom platform. Present from City Council, we have myself, Liz Mealy, Adam Yoder, and Bonnie Katz, all of us on the Finance Committee. And it doesn't look like we have any other members of council lurking out there in the lower realms of Zoom. Then we also have Joe Pavlock, Mark Killian, Janice Frank, and Josh Warfel from the administration. And we are expecting Kayla Drummond here at some point. And let's see here, item number one on our agenda today, I think we'll do items one followed by three and four, and then skip back to two if Kayla's able to join us. Okay, guys? So item number one on our agenda is a resolution, MOU between the County of Lightcoming and the City of Williamsport for the Edward Byrne Memorial Grant. Mr. Pavlock, I see that you're presenting that today?
Yeah, this is a resolution to approve a grant with the county or the grant program you just mentioned. The grant program includes the City of Williamsport and the County of Lightcoming as a disparate jurisdiction. And therefore, as part of the requirements of accepting the grant, each party needs to identify who's going to take what piece of the funding and who's going to be responsible for administering. So this grant, I believe, which is a few years old, is in the amount of eleven, almost eleven thousand five hundred. And the county is taking the responsibility and expending the funds for this to purchase command training, law enforcement refresher training, flashlights, camcorders, stop the bleed kits for Lightcoming County law enforcement. So with that, we're asking for your approval of the MOU.
Okay. Thanks, Joe. Bonnie, Adam, questions?
No, we see this practically every year.
No questions for me either.
The only question I have, Joe, is usually we do divide the sum of money that we receive. Is that not, in this case, it looks like it's about half of what we usually receive annually. And the county is simply taking all of it this year?
Because of the time restraints in getting this money spent, we felt it was the best idea at this point. It's not to say that with future sources or future rounds that we don't get the full amount. So it goes back and forth or is split as you had indicated.
Got it. Excellent. So this year, the counties, are we utilizing any of the cognitive command training, law enforcement refresher training, any of that stuff, or is that all just going to the county for the county's use as well?
I don't know the actual split of if they have an earmark for specific units at this time. But that was the description that they felt fit to get the program to approve.
Got it. So. Pardon me, Joe. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that last bit. Oh, yeah, I didn't think.
I think that there's, okay, someone else was off mute.
Okay. So the only, the only thing I'm curious about is why do we need to execute the MOU if the county is the grant applicant and we are keep, and is keeping all the funding?
It's one of the requirements of the grant showing our support for them to use the full amount.
Got it. Interesting.
Because we're a joint entity, that's what they want to make sure that both, everyone included in that joint group is agreeing to the terms, one isn't just coming in and taking over.
Got it. Okay. All right, then that's everything I have. If there are no further questions from anyone else in the room right now, hearing that I take a motion?
I'll make a motion for the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Bonnie?
Second. I'm sorry, I was on mute.
No, no problem. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks a lot, Joe, for presenting that.
Thank you.
Yeah. The next item on the agenda then, or the next, the next item that we'll be reviewing, excuse me, are both for Chief Killian. Item number three, a resolution for Williamsport Bureau of Fire to purchase a 2021 Chevy Silverado, Chevrolet Silverado, excuse me. Mr. Killian?
Yeah, I apologize for having some, Mr. Cooley has been diligently working on our computer system here and we got a new server, so we're all out of whack. I actually don't have a copy of the original resolution in front of me as Ms. Frank prepared that for us with our computer issues. But I'll go through the, the information that I sent to you. So the resolution in front of you again is to authorize the purchase of a 2020 Chevy Silverado for the amount of thirty-one thousand nine hundred and sixty-three dollars to Bob Fisher Chevrolet. This vehicle will replace a 2005 Ford Expedition that we got used from the police department several years ago, which is in pretty rough shape, no longer path inspection. We did, we shopped around with CoStars in working with Joe Pavlock, you know, we found the CoStars. You're not always going to get the best price with the first person you go to, so we got three CoStars quotes as outlined in the memo there. And Bob Fisher Chevrolet came back at the, the least dollar figure. So is the, is the financing and the purchase two separate, two separate resolutions?
Yeah, our agenda is two separate resolutions.
Okay, sounds good. Like I said, I apologize, I don't, with the email issues, I don't have it here. But, so the purchase, yeah, originally in 2020, we budgeted for around fifty-five thousand dollars for this vehicle. But because of, you know, the ongoing financial concerns, long term, we did a little creative work here. And by changing the type of vehicle that we're purchasing as opposed to a Tahoe, we're moving to a pickup truck route, which actually provides us with several advantages in getting turnout gear out of the cab of the vehicle, putting that in the back of the vehicle, but also doing a lot of the work in-house, radio, light installation, you know, with Mr. Cooley, you know, and eliminating some unnecessary, you know, equipment in that vehicle for the need that it's gonna, you know, gonna take place. We got that number down by over twenty thousand dollars. So we're pretty happy with where the, with where the price has fallen for this vehicle.
Okay. Yeah, that is, that is an impressive reduction. Do we, so this, this is the, the purchase of the vehicle and the total purchase price is thirty, about thirty thousand dollars, correct?
The total purchase price is thirty-one nine sixty-three.
Okay, got it. And, and then, so I'll, so we'll, we'll deal with both items simultaneously, I think, here. But Bonnie, Adam, do you have any questions on either of these?
No, had a good conversation with Mark about purchasing this vehicle. And really, like I said to you, Mark, good job in doing your homework and getting this accomplished. And twenty thousand dollars less than what was budgeted for and what you're going to accomplish with this. And as you said, it's also going to be refitted by city employees. So that's an expense that we don't have to worry about either, right?
That's correct. Yeah. The only, the only expense that we'll have when this comes in is getting the lettering done. But yeah, the, the radio and the light installation will be done by, will be done in-house by, by Mr. Cooley.
Which is fantastic, which saves us some money there also. Again, good job, Mark.
Thank you.
And oh, just, just another thing, just so everybody knows, the other vehicle was not going to pass inspection. It was beyond any, anything.
Yeah, yeah. And I should note too with that, we have a phenomenal relationship right now with the Streets and Parks Department. They're doing our vehicle inspections for us. So, you know, when we, when we wanted to get inspected, I got a phone call, went up to take a look at it, and the underside of the vehicle, again, it was a hand-me-down from the police department, used pretty hard. So it's, it's long past its, its useful life.
All right, great. Yeah, that, I mean, yeah, we, we know that we use vehicles pretty hard in this, in the city generally. When we're told that they can't, that they can't make it anymore, that's an accurate statement. But Adam, do you have any questions on this item?
Um, a couple. And I would agree with Councilwoman Mealy and Councilwoman Katz. Great job in, you know, moving stuff around and getting this initial cost reduced. It's great to see, and we definitely need it. I don't know that these are really answerable questions. I, they're really more, I guess, just understanding, I guess, maybe our strategy of financing this. Is there any reason that we can just, that we can't just buy it outright rather than finance it? It would save us an additional nine thousand dollars. I don't know if that's a Mark question or a Joe Pavlock question, but it was just something that stuck out to me initially.
So I, I can, I'll jump in partially there. From typically in the past with utility vehicles, we have not been able to budget the full amount for the vehicle purchase. We've been able to budget a portion of that because a good portion of that money comes from grant funding every year. A small amount of grant funding, generally fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. So at this point, I would, I would love to be able to, to look ahead and plan on putting the money aside for the entire vehicle purchase. But because of the need that we have right now to replace the vehicle, we don't have that much, we don't have that funding available in the budget. And we've been trying to work off of, of Mr. Pavlock's revised budget for us, you know, as best we could. And from, from what I'm looking at, we're, our interest over the course of the, over the course of the term would be about twenty-four hundred dollars in interest. Yeah, so no, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I would really like to be able to do that. And I think down the road, as we get better, you know, better suited for planning our budget out and planning ahead on these vehicles instead of being reactive with this, that's, that's the direction I'd like to go, for sure.
Yeah, no, that, I completely agree, and that makes perfect sense from a, I guess, cash flow perspective. So that answers my question completely. The only other thing, it's probably more of an observation. I think the interest rate was a little over four percent. It struck me as a little high, so I looked at a couple other banks and it looks like their rates were anywhere from low twos to mid threes. I mean, I don't know that there's really anything we can do about this particularly, but kind of tying this back to, I think, some of the conversations that we've had earlier in the year when we were talking about the tax anticipation note, you know, it might be a good idea over the next couple of years to explore some additional financing options, just to make sure that we are getting the best rates across the board from our banks, et cetera. So just a general observation, Joe, and team in the administration. But again, I, I appreciate the diligence you did on this. This was great.
Yeah, and Mr. Yoder, on that point, I did get some information from FNB Bank because I didn't want to go with the initial, you know, with one, with one finance. And FNB, I believe, is like four point seven five. It was, so I did get two. And we have an existing lease agreement with MNT, so that's what will kind of sway us in that direction.
Yeah, I figured as much, you know, I, the one, the one, I guess, probably the most comparable that I found, at least online, was PNC. And they were the one that was in the twos. PSECU was in the low to mid threes. I don't even know if they lend to municipalities.
Yeah, and that was, that was part of the municipal leasing.
Yeah, but in more general terms, it's just something to keep in mind as we move forward with, with our, with our financing needs. That, that's all. And I appreciate you looking at other options there as well, Chief Killian.
Yeah, thank you.
And I'm good.
Okay, you're good. Did I hear somebody else breaking in with a question? No? Okay. Then, sorry, then let me, then I'm going to follow up on Adam's line of questioning, which is what I always say, I understand the immediate physical, like, need for a vehicle, which obviously trumps financial concerns to a large extent. And I'm impressed with, with our ability to get purchase price down. It says in the memo that the 2020 budgeted amount for the vehicle was fifty-five thousand dollars. To thirty-five thousand dollars. The purchase price of the vehicle is thirty-one thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah. So the purchase price of the vehicle is right, it's thirty-one nine sixty-three, so kind of rounded to thirty-two. That gives us an additional three thousand for the lettering on the vehicle.
I guess what I'm confused is if we have that amount budgeted in 2020, why are we financing?
Well, it was budgeted between capital projects budget and our support equipment budget. It wasn't, it was never budgeted for that full amount. We were budgeted, budgeted to spend that in a lease, basically on a lease purchase.
Councilwoman Mealy, that, that line also encompasses other equipment purchases.
Okay, so that, so that's the equipment line item. It's not, what I'm wondering is, so the, the memo is, the wording in the memo is a little.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That, that's fine. I just wanted to make, yeah, I'm reading it and I'm saying, I don't understand. We've got thirty-five thousand bucks. It costs thirty-one thousand dollars. It seems like we're in. Okay, so that's, so that's the total equipment line item for the fire department, and there are other items coming out of it as well this year?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, so just for the sake of pointing it out, even with the reduced, you know, if it's, if, if we're paying twenty-four hundred dollars in interest over the next three years leasing this out through MNT, that's still almost ten percent of the purchase price of the vehicle. It's percent of the loan amount over the life of the loan. And, and of course, that's something that we should be trying to avoid. So I, I understand perhaps a, a lack of planning in the past and/or simply issues, unexpected issues cropping up with the vehicle that we've been working with. But I would agree, Chief Killian, that it would be good in the future to try and get a sense of our estimated end of life and start booking the full amount of funding into the budget because.
We're, we're working on that. We're working on that right now. For, we're working our apparatus acquisition plan out, for sure. So yeah, that's my intention moving forward, especially on the support vehicles. You know, we're gonna, we're gonna come to you in the next several months with some creative solutions on our, on our large fire apparatus, which, you know, are, are a million plus dollars. So, but on the support vehicles, yeah, there's no reason we shouldn't be budgeting for these on a rotational cycle to be able to pay, pay the complete price for them and not finance those.
Yeah, I think, I think that'd be nice. I mean, twenty-four hundred bucks is not a lot of money, but it is, it's still then what we're financing. And that's, it's just a silly amount of money to be paying out when we should be able to budget it out, right?
Agree.
What was I going to say? So that's, it's five, it's only five thousand dollars coming out of that support equipment line item this year?
Correct. Yes.
And then next, for the next several years, we'll be taking nine thousand out every year?
Yeah, that'll come from a combination of state grant funding and the support equipment line item, I guess.
Got it. And the grant funding.
It, it fluctuates between, generally between fourteen and twenty thousand dollars a year.
Okay. But we have every reason to expect that we'll be able to fund it with, to say, we're not making, we're not projecting to be able to fund it with something that won't exist two years down the line, right? Okay, good. Alrighty. Final question, you said, so we're getting, we're getting a pickup instead of a, an SUV? I'm assuming mileage-wise and everything like that were about even, right? And in terms of ability to handle wear and tear, about even?
Yeah, yeah, I would argue, we'll probably be, the pickup is probably going to better suit our needs.
Okay.
Because again, we purchased an SUV last year for our command vehicle. And that one carries a lot more, a lot more specialized equipment. For, for this vehicle, basically, as a duty officer chief's vehicle, it's going to be pretty bare bones. So we don't, we don't need the inside storage space. It will have a cap on it, but it also will be able to tow probably better than the, than the SUV would be. So it'll be more versatile for us, for sure, than the SUV would.
If, if I can ask one quick question then, related to the, specifically to the pickup truck thing. I know that we had last year pulled out of the budget the purchase of a pickup truck for the police, for them to haul. I think it was, can somebody help me remember? It seems to me it was like stolen bikes, things like that, that they might find. They, they.
You're right, Liz.
Streets and parks to come pick up those items. Is there any way we can work out some sort of a sharing program with this, with this pickup truck where the police might have access to it? Or is that, I mean, if I'm just totally out of left field, that's fine, just feel free to tell me that.
So specifically, this vehicle will be driven by, by myself for our deputy chief, twenty-four seven. Because we, you know, I don't want to say unlike the police department, but we're on call twenty-four seven. We run, we respond to incidents outside of normal work hours. So, you know, historically, we each have a vehicle, the, the deputy chief is going to get the vehicle that I had, had our former, our old command vehicle, which is, you know, we're looking to replace within the next couple of years. And then this one I'll be using for a daily driver and, you know, response after hours.
Sounds good. So this is your car basically all the time?
Essentially, yes. Unless I'm on vacation, then it comes to headquarters, you know, as a utility, as a separate utility.
That's good to know. But yeah.
I'm not taking it on vacation with me, I promise.
You're not going to the beach with it, right, Mark?
No, no, I'm not going to the beach with it. I got, I have my own truck at home.
No, excellent. Okay, well, that, that answers that question. I was just all of a sudden thinking, wait a minute, a pickup truck? Somebody needed a pickup truck? Well, if nothing else, perhaps at some point in the next, in the next little bit, we can hand this down to the police department. Thanks, thanks, Chief Killian. Are, are there any further questions, observations from anybody?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, I would take a motion then on item number three, the purchase.
Do you, do you want these motioned together, since we discussed them together, or do you want to do them separately?
Generally, let's just do them separately. In terms of order, I'm never quite sure where we fall there and I don't want to run afoul of it somehow. So let's motion separately. Item number three, Bonnie?
I make a motion that we pass this on to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Yep, and moving on, item number four, a resolution for the Williamsport Bureau of Fire to approve a lease agreement with MNT Bank. Do I hear, is, are there any further questions on this item?
No.
No.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to forward this on to the full body of council with a positive recommendation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Then the last item on our agenda is item number two. Item number two, a resolution to approve and renew the partnership with, between the city and Step AmeriCorps for a full-time AmeriCorps member in the recreation department. I heard, hey, Kayla, there you are. This item is being presented then by Ms. Drummond. Kayla, you want to take it away?
Hello. I am familiar with Step AmeriCorps. I came in through the city, through AmeriCorps myself. Being as I'm a department of one, I work with Public Works in the Streets and Parks, gentlemen. I just need more help in the office as far as paperwork, organizing, helping me get everything set up for appointments and meetings and anything of that nature. So I'm looking to bring somebody in, hopefully, the next week or so, to help me out in the office and get everything set up for next year. So this, this, this person, the fee wouldn't come out until 2021. I have a, I have an agreement with them because of COVID happening this year, that nothing will come out of our, my budget this year. It'll come out starting next year.
Okay. Got it. And this is a full-time versus a part-time?
Correct.
Okay, and the cost of that?
Sitting, I'm sorry.
What's the, what's the total financial obligation?
Eight thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Okay.
It's till August. So they, their term actually starts this Thursday until August of next year, August thirteenth of next year, I believe, is their end date, but can extend if needed.
Got it. Okay. And do we have, would the proposal be for the AmeriCorps member to start this Thursday? Or this Friday or?
Monday. So August thirty-first or September, because they're in orientation this week. So this is their first week when they're coming into their new year. So if, if it would be proposed that they start on Monday, so they do a full week.
Got it. Okay, and we have the AmeriCorps individual selected then?
Yes, his name is Odrin Polk. This will be his fourth year with a member, with AmeriCorps. He's helped me out with all my recreation events for the past three years. He helped me out with the summer lift program over this past summer. He helped me out with the summer camp, the pools, and the years prior, and every single event we have, street food, homemade days, Halloween, Christmas, he's been there. He knows how they run outside. I just need him in office.
Okay, got it. All right, so sorry for, for buttoning in there. Let me open this up to questions from, from Adam and Bonnie. Adam, Bonnie, anything?
Yes. When you say you're starting to work on things, how are things looking for next year? What do you think, what if it happens that we don't, aren't able to do things for next year? We are still committed to this, this program, I take it?
Yes and no. I would be committed only they, they would reduce their hours, which in then return would reduce my obligation as matchwise. So if we go, go back into shutdown mode, then everything gets shut down. We would, I would reach back out to them and that bill would, that bill wouldn't have to be paid or if it does turn back up, it would be a reduced payment.
Okay, that's good to know. I do have a thing on the contract under number two. The partner site agrees to the following financial responsibility. On B, the dates have October twenty-seventeenth to December twenty-seventeen. Is this just taken off of an old contract or?
Yeah, I might have, I must have sent her, sent Janice the wrong link then.
So these dates are going to have to be changed?
Yep. So the date would be, the full-time member would be August twenty-second was when their first year starts. So it would be August twenty, excuse me, thirty-first of this year until August thirteenth of twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
That's what.
States here, fifty percent of each to the first payment is due, okay, on October?
Yeah, I'll resend everything.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify the dates on this.
Yeah.
The other, you know, you know, this is so, this, this position is so precarious because of where we've been this year. When you say you have this person working on, you know, paperwork and things like that, are we working on pool schedules? The other thing I wanted to ask, are we doing any special events at all, planning for next year? I take it nothing is going to be in the works for this year, be it, you know, Christmas parade or anything like that?
Correct. Nothing this year. I'm basically trying to implement him into my normal schedule, get him adjusted to being in the office, because he's, he's coming from working with AmeriCorps for Williamsport School District. So he was interventionist, so he's been hands-on with children. So I'm trying to get him as far as learning the computer, how to answer phones, and then pre-planning for next year, yes. So as far as the pool schedule, the staff schedule for summer camp, the events on, like, it'll be a year calendar spread out, every event that we have, and what it takes to run each event and how he would be using his skills to help me take the load off of myself while I can go to meetings and he can utilize, and he can do those.
Well, plus you also need somebody in there if you're doing pool passes and things like that. So I mean, and I can understand that. I just want to clarify something for, let's say, everything's going to go back to normal for next year. Are we still going to maintain some of the, the special events that we had? Easter egg hunt, homemade days, I'm trying to think of some of the others, Williamsport welcomes the world. Are they still going to be on the calendar? Are we doing away with any of those?
No, if everything goes back, say, this fall, we just go back full force, everything happens last, next year as if nothing ever happened, every event, so we do Easter, homemade day, street food festival, Halloween, Christmas parade, Festival of Lights in Brandon Park, all of those will proceed as, as normal.
Okay. Then the one problem that you ran into this year was finding lifeguards for the pools, which you're going to have to really get up to snuff with that, aren't you, this year?
Yes. So I'm trying to start now because the school year's starting back up, where I work with Kim Woodington, who is our pool manager, and she'll recruit at Williamsport High School because they do their swim classes and they do their certifications. So if I can start with her now, by time spring hits, we'll have more lifeguards signed up to when, once the pool opens back up, I shouldn't have an issue with guards at all.
Good. I think that's something that, you know, like you said, that was one of the, one of the reasons why the pool couldn't be opened up, because you didn't have the personnel, the qualified personnel to work the pool. And speaking of pools, how is our, you know, what is the damage to the pool at this point? Is the leak still there or is that being repaired? How are we handling that?
It repaired the end of the season last year. So I don't, I didn't, I can't tell for sure because I wasn't able to fill the pool this year, if there was any other leaks or anything needed to be repaired as that, as that far. But from what I was told and what I've seen, it was repaired the end of the season when the pool was drained.
Okay, so there's no problem as far as it goes as present day, no problem then?
As far as, nope.
Okay. Okay, I think I don't have any other questions other than the dates and making sure everything, if it goes back to normal, everything is going to proceed as normal.
Yes.
And hopefully the parks programs are going to proceed really well. How does that go this year with the food bank and everything?
It was, it was a bit stressful. Their delivery guys were, we had a different delivery guy every day we delivered. So some of them didn't know where to drop off, the times were all over the. didn't know where to drop off, the times were all over the place, but we did end up delivering a good number of lunches per park, and then we, Ebenezer on Park Avenue came up and grabbed some lunches as well. And myself as far, and as well as Odrin helping me for the summer program, were delivering lunches to kids that weren't able to come out to the parks. So we just left them on porches and the kids would come out and grab them and we would just go.
But it was Is this over with now?
It is over. It ended the twentieth.
Okay, alright. So these kids are still on, have nothing now until school starts. And even then it's going to be a problem, because if, if they're only going to go to school two days a week, this is going to be a problem for some of these kids. Is, is there going to be a program set up for this?
From what I understand, the food bank, we had to stop the twentieth because they had to do a week where they were just getting all their paperwork back in order and getting everything set back up for their next term. But from what I understand is they're working with the school district to be able to provide something for the kids when they're not actually in school.
Because they do, the school district does get grants for the, for the breakfast and everything, don't they?
Yes, they do.
So this way, if it can be worked out that there could be pickups or whatever for the kids?
Right, was the end of the year.
Okay, okay, fantastic. Okay, I don't have any more questions right now. Thank you, Kayla.
Alright, got it. Thanks Bonnie. So Kayla, the, the one thing that I'm kind of trying to figure out in this, I mean, we all know that nine thousand bucks or eight, eight thousand nine hundred, whatever. It's a pretty good, it's a pretty good deal for a full-time employee. So, so there's no argument that Americor certainly provides value. But, but the, we, we've never had a full-time Americor person in the department previously, correct?
I was.
You were full-time? I thought you were part-time.
I started full-time. I switched to part-time and I went back to full-time.
Okay. And I guess the, the one thing that I'm kind of, I mean, we've had kind of a, a whole down year this year, and, and of course, help to, to work on planning for next year and try to figure out what we're doing next year. Is, do we, I mean, I guess I understand that we need the prop, the proposition is that we need him to be full-time starting like next April or something, but what are we going to do with a full-timer between now and then?
Between now and then, I have, and how the program works, if I don't have anything for, in office for them to do right now, itself will step in and then give them something to do as far as volunteer work, as far as helping another site out. It doesn't necessarily have to be with me full-time for the beginning of this year.
Got it, but we are paying, I mean, I, I know that we're paying him like a buck an hour or something, but we are paying him to be full-time. Whether or not he's working for us full-time.
Correct.
Okay, and is there any way, there's not any potential for sharing with some other department or anything like that? If there's a department
Him, I wouldn't see an issue with him going over to another department, as long as it's city.
Well, yeah.
Let's say that, since I'm in Public Works, let's say one of the gentlemen needs help, like getting out tools or help load his truckers, their truck or something. He could do that. He could even help somebody in another department as far, I don't know if finance would be the right answer. But for an example, if you go to finance and help copy papers or anything like that, he's more than able and capable of doing that.
Okay, but so the idea is that we will have theoretically a full-time occupation for him starting in April, but nothing, nothing between now and then. Or not nothing between now and then, but not a whole lot. I, I understand the way Americor's year works, and then theoretically, Americor people can only stay for two years at a given site, right? Is that part, it's four now?
Yeah, you can stay with Americor four years, and if that site decides to keep you for those four years, you're able to do that.
Ah, okay, I thought when you were with us, it was only two, that people could Got it, got it. Alright, so that's good. So theoretically, he can kind of roll over and ideally provide more utility to us moving forward. But I'm just trying to, trying to think of what we're going to do with this guy.
Right.
For a while.
This is where the contract comes in because it's so bizarre. It doesn't start at the, the beginning of the year. Starting at the end of August, it just, it screws up our timing because we need a person more coming in January to get everything ready for the, the rest of the year.
Right, I mean, we really, what we really need in the rec department is probably a second hire like February through October or something, you know? So for someone to start in the rec department now, I mean, there's just so little. I mean, we're, we're still not, Kayla, we're not planning any special events between now and the end of the year, correct?
Correct.
I mean, are we doing like Christmas parade, or are we figuring on trying to put things like that together?
We're just not, we're not doing the parade this year. I will, I will have to do something for the, like, that has to happen. That's our annual, like, the light comes on. It just won't be a big event like it normally is.
Got it. I mean, I would guess that it would seem like we maybe should think about that. By that time of the year, it seems like that we should have some kind of, you know what I mean, like, it's cold and everybody's outside and everybody's wearing masks. We probably could have some relatively large event, but, but obviously that's up to the administration, but it seems like the world could use a bit of a pick-me-up right now around the holiday season.
Definitely.
Yeah. But but okay, and so this is not budgeted in this year's budget?
No, it's next year's.
Mr. Pavlok, can you talk to me a little bit about how that's going to look? Because I know that twenty twenty-one is really the budget that we're nervous about in terms of salaries. Not so much, you know, this year I know our revenue is, most of our revenue is coming in, but what we're really nervous about is what might happen in twenty twenty-one. Talk to me about budgeting that and what the administration's thinking. Do you have any insight on that? Joe, is Joe still out there?
I'm sorry, I, I got a visitor, I'm sorry. I missed some of the conversation.
But can, can you talk to me a little bit about how the administration's planning to budget this?
As Kayla indicated, it's my understanding that we, we'll be pushing this off into twenty twenty-one, so it's something that we're going to have to incorporate into the twenty twenty-one budget now. As everyone's aware, there are the uncertainties that are out there, but I think her previous description had mentioned that, and I can't recall whether it was, there was no financial obligation for us if, if something would come up and we'd have to reduce or couldn't fulfill the hours, or if there'd be a, a partial obligation on the city's behalf, so I guess we'd have to keep evaluating the future and where we see it standing as to, you know, how we can pursue ongoing throughout this year. I, I really haven't had many conversations related to this topic. So, trying to catch up a little bit.
Okay, yeah, I, I, I apologize. I'm just trying to get a sense of, you know, what we've generally been trying to do is obviously limit our expenditures this year. But primarily, our thought process is that we need to limit our expenditures this year because we have no idea how bad our budgetary situation is going to be next year. And so to be, to be kind of pushing off a nine thousand dollar expense from this year into next year in the hope that 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 will enable us to better fund it seems like inaccurate, I suppose, perhaps an unwise strategy.
I guess, from, from a question standpoint, and Kayla, you can help out with this, or Kayla, you can answer this. What, what do we risk if we try to hold off and wait until January when things start to ramp up? Or we know more of what's going to happen, you know, with all the schools opening, things of that nature, gatherings? Have a better feel if we would, if we postpone or, or, or hold off for a little bit of time?
Yeah. The question is, do we, do we lose the, the individual if we can't bring him on right now, or how, how does that work, Kayla?
So yes, we would lose that individual altogether. He would be placed at a different site. There's no telling if I could eventually get that person back. Or if I have to go through this process all over again. As far as interviewing these Americor members, like, they interview them first and then they send them to me. I do the interview process. It would be coming then to, like, anybody else that would want interview them as well, like, also meet Joellen, he would meet Derek, and they would go through the whole, he would go through
Got it. So, so you said his name is Odrin, I believe? And he, and he's gone through the whole city interview process at this point?
First what I've been told, Derek and Brittany, who is Americor, she's their program specialist. They were having that communication, actually come in to meet and have that interview process.
Okay. Oh, so it hasn't actually happened?
No, because we weren't sure if we were even going to have a member at this point.
Okay, well, yeah, that's what I'm trying to suss out, because I think, I mean, the, the the, the question for me, and maybe we can continue this discussion on Thursday a little bit, is I don't understand the, the administration's, like, grand financial plan for twenty twenty-one yet, and I don't, I don't know that the administration understands that yet either, and that is understandable because it's a hot mess and nobody knows exactly what we're looking at going into the new year. But just the question of, what are our plans for, for making sure that this individual is occupied, that we get full utility out of the position? And then that we have the ability to fund it in the twenty twenty-one budget year, when we're looking at cutting positions elsewhere, or, or at least like holding, you know, high, like kind of a hiring freeze in most departments. You know, so how, how do we, how do we make the most of this particular hire if that's what we're moving forward with? That's, that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Kayla, can I, I'm sorry, can I jump in real quick? And you said that if, if, if Odrin wasn't placed here with the city, that, that he'd go off to another site. He'd become a service member somewhere else. Does, does Step this year, or does Americor this year have like a waiting list with everything else that's going on? Are they, are they short on members?
No, they're not. I actually had orientation with them this morning. They are not short on members. All the members that they have are already placed elsewhere.
But are there other organizations that are waiting for service members?
No.
So there, I guess, is there a spot for Odrin to go to if we don't bring him in? And would that give us potentially the ability maybe later down during the cycle to pick him up?
There is no spot for him, no, at this current moment. There would have been three weeks ago. But they filled that position with another member, so
But that's where I'm, that's where I'm saying, Kayla, because of the, I think I, I, again, I've been in and out of this conversation and council is, or the committee seems to be concerned as everyone is with, with the financial picture going forward. And then you had indicated that if he wasn't brought in as a service member here at the city, he would go to another location. But I think that I just heard that there's not other locations out there at this point, so he'd be waiting in Americor's pool of service members, and potentially we could snag him up later on when there's some more certainty. And I, I'm not trying to, I'm just trying to come up with solutions to, to fit everyone's concerns. And I, I know that that doesn't necessarily, you know, work out for us, but we don't have a lot going on, so we can pick up a few more tasks. Unlike the, the peak periods where there's a lot going on. Just, I guess, food for thought for everyone, if, if, if my thoughts are actual are, are, are true or fitting in with everyone's understanding of the picture.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's kind of my question, Joe, while, and/or my question is, I, I would like to maybe between now and Thursday, have a better understanding from the administration in general as to what their plans are for recreation next year. You know, that's, that's kind of what I'm trying to figure out is, are we, are we planning to run a full recreation program? To what extent are we certain that's going to be a possibility? And, and so sort of where does this individual fit into that picture? We know that he might be under occupied for a couple of months. That's not perhaps a huge issue. But, but, you know, what if we don't wind up running a full-fledged recreation program next year? What if, you know, what if, what if, what if? And where is this going in the budget in twenty twenty-one? You know, where, how are, how are we, how are we making that judge? So I, I don't need answers to those questions today at the finance meeting, but I think they're questions that I'll be asking again on Thursday. Kayla, and, and so if maybe, maybe you could talk to Derek and try and flesh out sort of what, what our plan is for rec and what we're thinking between now and then. Just, you know, because we've been, we've been, we've been giving people a lot of flack, especially the police, about, you know, new hires in light of the, of the COVID. The light of the pandemic. And, and I, you know, even though this hire comes to us at a substantially reduced price over basically any other hire we're making in the city. Still think that it, you know, we, we need to, we need to put some thought into what our business is for the department and, and, and make, make sure that, that, that he fits in before we move forward. And added, Bonnie, how do, how do you feel about that? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm kind of dominating the discussion.
No, that, that's okay. I, 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 I agree between Councilwoman Katz's comments and Councilwoman Neely, your comments. I, I agree with all of them. I mean, just taking some notes down here, correct me if I'm wrong, I mean, there's just been a, there's a couple of common questions that seem to be coming forward. If we lose the individual, how do we get them back? It seems that Mr. Pavlok has answered that question. It would be good to confirm that before Thursday. What will this individual be doing if we bring them onboard between now and February? And I think that's important if we do bring them on for sure. What are our general plans for twenty twenty-one in recreation? What's the clarity look like? And then fiscally for twenty twenty-one, what's the plan to fund this in the budget? Am I missing anything from Bonnie, Liz? I mean, that's what I've kind of gathered, and I agree with all of those.
You know, I, I think we're all in a precarious position at this point, not knowing where we stand in the world. You know, where else though can you get a full-time employee for a little over eight thousand dollars? And I know Kayla needs the, the employee come the busy time, especially when she starts working on things in January. So literally, we're talking September, October, November, December, we're talking four months of not getting a full use out of this person, because this year has been a washout all the way around. But on the other hand, how do we compensate for Kayla come January?
Yeah, I, I, I would agree, Bonnie. I think you broke up there for a sec, Bonnie, at least on my end you did.
Yeah, you froze up a little bit too, Bonnie, it's okay.
You know what, my mouse has froze up too, so I can't even. Everything has frozen up here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we can.
You know, it, what do we do with the contract? I mean, they're, like, like I said in the very beginning, because their, their contract runs so, so strange. And we've always, you know, come up with this every year.
Yeah, I mean, I think as Joe said, we can wait and see what the future holds and then hope that this individual is still available when we arrive there. I mean, that, that strikes me as a, as a potential strategy. If we do really think that we, that we want, that we're going to require the services of, of an Americor member, that seems to me unfair to, to to try to put somebody off like that. But on the other hand, this is a really strange year, and I would just hate to get to January. You know, have been not making full use of the member, you know, for four months, for a third of the year. And then we get to January and we decide that we're not opening the pool, and we're not doing this, and we're not doing that, and, and we really don't need the person after all. So I think what, really what I'm, what I'm hoping that, that Kayla might be able to help me out with between now and Thursday is just kind of fleshing out with, with, with the mayor, and perhaps with Joe. What the, what the financial and, and, and sort of planning picture for recreation looks like next year. You know, how does this, you know, eight or nine thousand?
Lost you, Liz.
Yeah, lost you, Liz. You're, you there?
Yep, we lost her.
I'll call her.
She muted herself.
I'm muted, I did not.
There you go. Your, your, your audio cut out and then it showed up that you were muted, so I don't know if somebody else muted you or what.
Maybe, or, or maybe my phone's, my phone's been doing some funny things to me lately, so maybe that's just one of them. Anyway, sorry, I said, you know, I, we keep going over the same points, but what I'm hoping to understand is a better picture of, of what our recreation department is hoping to accomplish next year. Whether this individual can either help us to, to raise funding through special events next year, which might help us to account for the, for the for the, for the cost of the position, whether, whether the individual can help us to put together safer events next year, you know. next year, you know, of sort of what our plan is. Um, but uh, but all of that said, I think we, we need, especially after, after this year when we haven't been able to offer much recreation in the city, I think we need to be able to offer a robust recreation and special events program next year. Assuming we can do that safely, um, because we owe it to our, to our citizens, so um, so certainly if, if, if we have a hire that can help us do that, I think that would be a, a wise idea. Uh-
I agree with you thoroughly, Liz. It's one of those things that even if we went into a situation similar to this year, we should get more creative uh, to help our citizens along. I mean, this, this has been a long year and uh, we don't want to see it go into another year of this, so if things do uh, surface that we can't do some things, let's at least figure out what we can do to accommodate the kids in our community at least.
Yeah, exactly. Um, are there any further um, comments on this right now?
No.
Okay, I personally, I would feel comfortable forwarding this with no recommendation to encourage a bit more discussion by the full body of council. Um, but if you guys both want to do a positive recommendation, that, that's fine with me, I'm just-
Yeah, I'm, I'm okay giving it a positive recommendation with stipulations. Um, and I'm happy to do that. I mean, if you want to vote no for it, that's fine, Liz, but I'm okay giving it positive with stipulations.
Um, okay, um, sounds good then, uh, why don't you make your positive recommendation with stipulations, Adam?
Sure. Um, no, I'll, I'll make a motion to forward this to the full body of council with a positive recommendation under the conditions of um, having a plan of how we um, keep this individual busy, busy during the part-time season. Um, what um, the plan for recreation in twenty one, twenty one is going to look like. Um, addressing the concerns surrounding the twenty twenty-one budget. Um, can it confirmation that we can indeed sever the contract or cut this individual if needed um, in next year's budget? Um, and um, if we decide to not hire this individual, clarity on the process of going back and getting um, hiring this individual when full-time comes around.
Mm-hmm. Got it. Um, okay, Bonnie, do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, all opposed, nay. Uh, right, um, sounds good. Then I think we've reached the conclusion of our formal uh, finance committee agenda, the only remaining item, number five, is any related items? Does anyone have any items to introduce for the good of the order?
No.
Joe, nothing, nothing on your end?
No.
Um, okay, and uh, Joe, if I can just ask you real quick, what is the outlook for um, sort of the budget and, and planning for twenty twenty-one? How, where's he, not on that?
I'm intending to start uh, pulling things together here in the near future. Um, getting things to be uh, started, uh, finding out what the departments need, um, and then starting to work into it. Um, I think that this year we're going to need a longer timeframe than we have in the past, and I think that due to scheduling, um, it might need to be delivered earlier than it has in the past. Um, just the way the meetings fall. So um, we'll want to get it started here shortly and then um, keep it up to date with um, how the, the world progresses.
Got it. Um, thanks, Joe, yeah, it just, it, it seems like it might be A, a difficult budget and B, a difficult budget to um, just for all of us to sort of work through, it might take a lot of discussion.
Yeah, and coming here in September, I think we'll want to revise um, some of the projections. Um, taxes should be uh, pretty clear, um, as we'll have hit the end of face here at the end of August on Monday. Um, so we'll have some more stuff, so, so here in September, we'll want to start looking at that and that also leads into to what we'll be doing as part of the budgeting process, so.
Got it, and um, the, when's the audit coming in?
Um, I'm working on tying up one last fund. Um, once I get that through, I'll get it out to the auditors. Um, and it'll be the goal to have it completed by the end of September.
Got it, so we'll be, we would be reviewing it at the end, at the last meeting in September?
It will be the goal to get it completed by the end of September.
Got it.
I'll have it to you as soon as I can have it after it's been finalized.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out whether we should have a conversation about the audit and then perhaps about the twenty twenty-one budget in some meeting and if so, when that, when that would fall.
Most likely that would fall in October, budget will be due mid-November, I think November nineteenth this year, so I think from a timing standpoint, um, just looking it through, the administration can work on the budgeting side of things. Um, we can get ending results and then start to tie everything together in November, so month to month.
Got it, okay. Um, yeah, I just, uh, I, I feel as though for years we have talked about how council wants to be more involved in the kind of some of the initial discussions about the budget and it, it doesn't ever really happen and, and I'm guessing that that is much more convenient for the administration than we're not necessarily, but it might be helpful. Um, given how weird the twenty twenty-one budget's going to be, if, if we could have conversations about it before we actually receive it in Jan, in November, that might be, might be, might be helpful for all of us.
Yeah, make sure to, to pass that along to the mayor and um, you know, it, this is your committee, I mean, you can add items to the agenda and, and we can participate where we can.
Um, thanks, thanks, Joe.
I, 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 I don't think that there'll be an issue with, with some participation, um, but again, I'll, I'll let the mayor know and get back with you.
Okay, sounds good. Um, thanks, thanks a lot, Joe. Uh, if there are no other related items, then I would take a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion to adjourn?
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, okay, thank you very much, everyone, I appreciate uh, your time, your attention, your patience.